Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You are watching a fact TV presentation of the BFUHS School Board Meeting.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, November 13th at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Bell's Falls Junior High School District. Uh, in a budget of eight minutes, please. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, if we could just do quick introductions around the room, that would be great. Chris Clark, I'm here with you, please.
I'm David Clark. I'm representer of Westminster on the High School Board.
I'm Priscilla Lambert. I reckon, I I'm here for Rockingham on the Bell's Falls Junior High School.
Uh, Dr. Strake here for Granton.
June Streeter representing Westminster.
Deborah Wright representing Rockingham.
Jason Terry representing Rocky Hill.
Andy Ossoberg, Dennis.
I'm stack, but like person Rocky him.
Jamie Staro, Westminster.
Uh, Ron Wells representing Rockingham.
And online, we have the principal with us, Kelly Orion. Would you join us, Kelly?
Good evening.
Is there any adjustments to agenda? Here.
Um, the athletic director isn't going to be here this meeting, so can we just delete that? And move it to the next or table it till the next meeting?
So, do you still want to do HA?
No, because I think he has to be here for that.
Do you want to do the whole thing next meeting?
If he's going to be here.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, we're not gonna do H or HA.
Uh, yeah, under eighth committee updates, I'm going to add a D, which will be the Atty. Finance Committee update and also have some material to hand out for our upcoming um, high school budget committee next Monday.
Yeah, that's just informational stuff, right?
Yeah.
All right, great. We do have a very old agenda, so instead of like that, all right, uh, I want to move on to communication or public comments. Do we have any? Yeah.
Well, yes, only that because they are likely meeting, some of these are likely meetings, I would ask that for another try to be as concise and thought as much as possible and try to reduce redundancies, which is the same people, different people saying the same things. It just, it actually, it's I can feel it kind of grinds me, but only because we waste a lot of time through that, we go round and round in a circle, but we don't get anything. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right. Up next, uh, we have a review and approved board minutes. I believe they're for October 23rd. Can I get a motion, somebody?
So much.
Thank you. And since we're all here, uh, and nobody's on Zoom, I don't need to do a roll call. Um, all in favor, just say hi or hi, any of those? All right. I believe that's it for a minute. Is that correct? Yes. So, caught up. Shot, Darcy, turn. Uh, new business for discussion from DEC regarding PCBs returning school to full operation with action, I think. I believe we all have the report and I believe that it was actually already reported in the paper.
It was.
So, I'd like to just, uh, make a motion that, uh, we open this school fully under option three, I believe, which is no restrictions and, uh, we open it tomorrow. That is my motion. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, uh, actually.
Question, does that have to be a supposed to be option like under option three?
Yeah, so, uh, we were opening school fully, option three, no restriction.
So, option three, Kelly, here correctly on, um, the speaker, I believe, option three uh, allows us full flexibility to use spaces. Um, the one big change was on the options. It went from 26 hours to 45 hours. Um, and that just has to do with limitations. So, in some of those areas, we may still try to limit like the gymnasium, we may still try to limit, you know, how long kids aren't in there for the full time like an academic wing, so, um, it shouldn't be, but is that correct? Kelly?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm understanding basically no restrictions, um, at all, right?
Correct.
Okay, so motion on the floor. Um, I actually would like to roll call this, um, uh, David? Yes. Priscilla?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yeah?
Hi.
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Jay?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
All right, school is open tomorrow. Uh, well, everything else closed, so it's open tomorrow. Good luck, Kelly. Thank you for all you guys did. All right, up next, uh, principals report. Um, Kelly, this is your fire away, please.
Sure, so, um, I'll just kind of highlight a couple pieces, uh, that I put forward in that report. One is, I think there's a lot of great things happening outside of the PCB. Certainly, there's some great news tonight and thank you for the support with the reopening. Um, I think, given tomorrow, we've got this surprise delivery. I thought we were just going to be getting our kind of summer furniture order to refresh our library and some of our conference room spaces. But actually, I believe we're expecting all of our furniture that we had ordered in two phases. So, some of the, um, furniture that we got for the main hallway, for example, to support more student-centered kind of gathering spaces, right? That's some clear feedback that we've gotten from students that they didn't feel like there was a lot of spaces to kind of congregate with one another outside of the cafeteria or library. So, we really focused on trying to shore up some additional, additional spaces like that in addition to revamping, uh, the library and promoting some more accessible seating options. Um, and I believe everything will be arriving tomorrow morning, 10 AM. So, I think by end of day tomorrow, uh, some of our main, uh, spaces should have a nice refresh. Um, we've had some, I'm not sure if this will come up later in our, uh, facilities or kind of, uh, building and grounds committee updates. We have had some facilities issues that we've had to navigate, some fairly significant ones in the sense that, um, they could have resulted in school closure, um, namely around our boiler. Ran into some issues there. There were two separate days where, one where our boiler was non-functioning and another one where some of our fuses were uh, misfiring, um, which caused some problems in the building and some concerns around low heat. Fortunately, that was, you know, about a week and a half ago when weather was warmer, so we did not need to close, but we're keeping close tabs on getting that, um, shored up. And the other issue had to do with a, a failure of our fire alarm system. Again, we've got, that was shored up same day, um, but we're still, we still have some long-term work that needs to be done there to ensure that nothing like that happens again. Um, so again, the facilities pieces are still kind of front and center, uh, but I do think we are getting some, um, making the right connections and a good plan is falling into place. Um, we did receive, uh, a, a, a nice financial gift, uh, through the JED Foundation to support our ability to partner with them on a three-year technical assistance grant that's going to focus explicitly on, uh, mental health, specifically student mental health in the building, uh, and they're, they're a very strong reputable organization. I've worked with them in my prior place of employment and have nothing but glowing things to say about the work they're able to provide school communities. I think the data, some of the data points we've gone over in prior meetings around our climate surveys and student experiences of being in the building, um, in terms of help-seeking behavior, substance misuse, things like that have remained a fairly chronic and persistent need, um, not just in our building, but in a lot of high schools in the state. And I think JED is well-equipped to kind of help us, um, do some additional problem solving around that in terms of our policies and procedures to really support help-seeking behavior and social connectedness across the board. So, I'm really excited about that. That is slated to start in February of this year. And again, that'll be a three-year kind of strategic planning, technical assistance grant that'll be working with a core, core team in the building. Um, yeah, beyond that, we're really looking at some great, uh, leadership opportunities for students in the building. I know Connor was unable to join us tonight, given that he's up at an athletics leadership conference with, I think, four or five of our student leaders. Uh, and then we have another group coming from the high school, joining with a middle school, uh, to kind of relaunch our Getting to Y group, which is really looking at our Y, YRBS data and some of that climate data that we've been getting every other year, uh, and really having the students in particular put fresh eyes on that data set and really kind of partner with them and bringing forward some of their vision for how to address some of the concerns that are coming through in that data set. So, I'm really excited about that piece in particular. Um, yeah, so I'll just kind of pause there and open it up to any questions on that report or anything that's been put forward.
Any questions for Kelly? I see June's hand first.
Um, Kelly, it looked like your report was cut off. Did we get the whole thing?
Yeah, I had replied to email. There was, there was a closing few sentences specific to the KI furniture delivery, uh, that's scheduled for tomorrow morning. So, I did reply to that email to include that piece that was cut off. Sorry, I sent that very early this morning and did not ensure, and then, yeah, so my signature in that last piece was not included.
David?
Yeah, Kelly, have we canceled modulars?
That's a great question. No, we have not canceled the modulars. We still have the four modulars on site. Um, they are still going to be the, the home for, uh, some of our support services team and the transportation team for the duration of the year. We do have a 12-month lease on those four modulars and that lease is supported by the DEC even with the shift to our, um, full reopening. Uh, we did clear that with the DEC that they will still support the funding for that. Uh, and that will still be helpful as we look to phase in our work with the science rebuild in particular. We do have to relocate, um, two of those science classrooms in anticipation of the start of the new year. And so, the spaces that transportation and the support services are coming out of will be the spring's term home for those two science classes in particular. So, the modulars are onsite. The open question will be the two that we currently have, um, reserved for locker rooms. Um, how we can kind of recalibrate, uh, to use those spaces with more intention, uh, with the reopening of our gym. But those will remain onsite. I think the lease is through the end of July. Andy, is that right?
Uh, what do you mean, you're up guys? So, thank you, Kelly.
I, I don't have a lease in front of me. I'd have to pull it up to know the exact deadline date, but.
Good. Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, great. Thank you, Kelly. Um, up next, we have, uh, buildings and grounds, uh, update from November 8th, 2023, informational. So, can I get one of the people who are there to kind of recap it quickly? Rob, David, Priscilla, Mike, everybody?
Okay, um, we, we were presented with a, uh, proposal for a five, uh, year plan to, um, try to stay on top of facilities maintenance and know exactly where it is on my desk at home, but I cannot speak to you about specifics without having it in front of me, but I see that you have it in front of you. Just send it here. Thank you. And I think my summary is going to be that we were able to, um, price some items. And helpful if anyone had this, maybe you've already reviewed it, and we have other, um, items still to go. I think that what, what we have here, although, um, trying to think how best to express this, we have some items which we're going to try to get done, and Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, please, such as security upgrades, we'd like to get done, um, uh, during the current year. And then we have other items, um, we're still, for instance, you know, having a discussion around uh, library because it seems to be a general consensus that the seating in the library needs to be replaced. But I don't believe that's been, uh, set on schedule, um, as of right now. And then there, um, are other items, we're still talking about improvements to tennis courts and what we're going to do with track, um, which are, um, what I would refer to as simply ongoing. So, I, my best advice is to stay tuned through buildings and grounds that we can make our next meeting. I'm not sure where that meeting is. We still think, I don't think we did.
Yeah, we did, uh, I don't have it right in front of me, but I know we did set a date. I wrote it down on my, my agenda from last night, but, um, set a few weeks.
November 30th at four o'clock, it says on the minutes.
November 30th, 4:00 PM.
November 30th, 4:00 PM.
All I want with the cup. Um, Rob, anything on the buildings and grounds?
No, I think to David's point, just having, you know, having Kelly and her staff putting together a five-year plan so that, uh, and we talked about this during the buildings and grounds committee is, so there's a plan moving forward and that we know it's going to be fluid, but that we have a driven identity of what really needs to be looked at in an aging facility.
Yep, yeah, well said. Uh, Priscilla, you were there, anything?
My, I think you covered it well.
Right?
What? Uh, no, I would just repeat what David said. Basically, uh, Jeff and Kelly gave us a rank list of projects that they'd like to attack in 25 and then they, some of those projects, um, things like flooring would, um, go out over multiple years. You know, to me, um, it's important because one of the things that we've been looking for is to bring this kind of, uh, expense, like expenditure into the budget. Some of these things have been neglected and to incorporate it in, in the budget this year, I think it's important to, to acknowledge we have to keep spending on these things as we go. So, I think this was a, 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 a great exercise by Jeff and Kelly and I think that's, uh, exactly, I mean, obviously it's very different, but, uh, the bigger dollars that SRS, uh, but this is kind of the ongoing thing that's, that we can tell, uh, you know, continue to support as part of our project.
Okay, Jamie, you have a question?
Yeah, um, I, I love seeing this. I thought this was really helpful to kind of lay out what, what needs to get done. It's a little overwhelming to see. I think it's great. One question I had, though, you all discussed, um, the idea of evaluating the useful life of the building, um, just to determine the infrastructure, the safety, everything that this building currently has. So, is there a plan to do that, you know, kind of before some of these big projects take place?
Do you want to catch my name? I think you were there, but I know, uh, I, I can't answer to what the discussion was. Although, I think the discussion basically was, you know, we want to make sure that we're not going to put, you know, uh, a ton of money into.
It would be a money pit situation.
Yeah, 1950 MG car. You don't want to do that.
There's a couple things I was gonna ask. Uh, so, a report from the state came out, uh, very similar to, not what you saw.
Yeah.
Uh, very similar to the report, the engineering report that we had already done. And so, I, I, Kelly, I don't believe that got incorporated into yours because it might have come out after and you guys did that work. And we sent that to building principals and heads of maintenance to ask them to look at those two documents side by side because they push out 10 years and they talk about all the different infrastructure pieces. So, they came into our building and actually walked around and looked at all these different things. And so, um, in, in looking at it, there's some price point differences, um, but you also had the criterion, um, one was done uh, a couple of years ago and this one was done recently, but, um, but there's also, the states is based on replacement of in-kind, not you know, like upgrading to what the current status would be. So, um, but it gets into a lot of the, the different things around replacing windows and replacing, you know, pieces that you're, you're talking about that may not have made it into that list that are just the, the everyday kind of maintenance piece. So, um, that's going to be some continued work, um, uh, that the building's going to need to do to kind of look at that. Um, I've also reached out to Steve for him just to kind of pick his brain around the question about like engineering and having an engineer come in because, again, I know that he's had some folks look at different parts, um, especially like around the roof and stuff like that. So, um, you know, uh, but we can get what we're in. I, I believe he's scheduled to come in here and discuss, I will, yeah, so I'm sure, uh, he'll have that information.
I know, um, so I, I saw recently the Burlington School is, uh, eating an additional $20 million on top of their hair down. And I know that, you know, like when I costed it out from, uh, you know, this rough math, um, you know, building a school at the size would cost like 90 million bucks. Um, so that's what we're preparing for. So, that, that's, that's a big chunk of change. So, um, you know, hopefully, uh, hopefully we can get it done right. And the other thing we talked about in the buildings and grounds is, um, we want to try to put something in place, you know, a five-year plan. That's not like, you know, every year we kind of seem like we're throwing stuff at the dartboard. Okay. All right, what's the emergency now? Let's fix it. Instead of a, a real plan that we can adjust, but it's planned. And, and then also, you know, let's face it, in March, there's going to be people, new board members, and we're going to try to figure a way to have, um, you know, I'll call it a, a, you know, a legacy budget line items somehow, some way. I don't think, I'm not sure if you can, but it's, it'd be, it'd be interesting to try to, try to do something like that, but there will be board members on the board. So, if we have wishes, hopefully those people can carry that forward to like, hey, let's continue the good work we're doing.
So, so that was a question asked on that committee. Yeah, uh, I, I did see counsel on that. Uh, had to get some clarification on that question, but I believe you can, um, have a line item in your local budget for capital improvements. Yeah. And if you didn't say like line item for track, like, and then all of a sudden you needed to it was something catastrophic.
Something, an emergency comes up.
Yeah, right.
The plumbing.
Well, you could, because you lined it. This is my interpretation of what the answer was. And why I'm seeking clarity, if you lined it for track, couldn't pivot to the emergency, but if you lined it for capital improvement, then you've got some more flexibility. Is that my, I'm trying to get you some, uh, some help on that.
I, I think that the key is that whoever's here next year, we have a lot of people out for elections, just don't screw it up. All right, let's not do that.
Mike, uh, just one other question we asked and I'm not sure who's going to find the answer to this, but we had 530,000 returned, uh, from the SU, uh, to the school and we wondered if that could be moved into a capital improvement account. We're down a vote, uh, from the board. What, what's the answer? Need a vote? It does ask to offer.
Even, even with after, after, to any money?
So, any, any money that's been returned to you, you will have to, my understanding is going to have to go on to a vote, but I, I.
A vote of this board or the taxpayers?
The taxpayers, but, but I am seeking more clarification. I just got those today, so.
Yeah. All right. So, all in all, very productive meeting, uh, and again, it's open to the public, open to everybody who wants to come. We have minutes posted, uh, as I come, so it's documented reviews. Okay, any other questions on that? And then we'll forward, um.
Uh, yeah, I have a question if you don't mind. Um.
Go ahead, sir. What is your, can you say your name, please?
Um, Justin Fuller, uh, Westminster. Um, our, what is the plan for the high school road? I know the voters appropriated, I think it was $2 million to do that this year. Um, where does that lie?
Um, the driveway is your question. When, uh, I want to make sure I understand your question. You want to, you want to know when the driveway is being done? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, typically we don't respond, but we, we can. Uh, I believe that is this summer, this upcoming summer.
Okay, and that money is still there that the voters appropriated last year?
Correct.
Okay.
You haven't gone out.
Haven't gone out.
You have, you haven't gone out.
We were approved to, up to $2 million to get it on.
But you have not gone out for a while, yeah.
That will be January, December, January. Yeah.
Just wanted to make that clear. You are not paying any money on that or anything in this time.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, did that, thank you, sir. Thanks for your questions.
Actually, just I have one other question. Uh, there was some debate as to, we have a capital uh, improvement account out. It's got roughly a million two in it. And we were asking the question whether or not any of that had been allocated to any specific projects yet. And everyone asked that question.
I always ask that question, um, and they're not allocated any specific, uh, project. Uh, however, in discussion, going back to four minutes, but also prior, it went building grounds weren't keeping board. Uh, there was discussion that your HVAC system from originally $1.8 million and it was $3 million and then all of a sudden it was $5 million. And the discussion went around, um, Asr might not be able to cover all of that and sort of hold that money and reserve and possibly cover that, um, extra piece of it. Um, but we're at a point right now where we're just starting to get bids back in on that HVAC project, which is why we haven't come back to say we want to actually allocate this kind of, uh, help.
When, when do you think we'll know, you know, when like that, you know, it was, it, it pulls the HVAC or whatever?
I would suspect probably when Steve comes in.
On the 27th, I need some information. Okay, great. Uh, thanks for asking those questions. Okay. Yeah, thanks for having us ready for us, Andy. Uh, all right, up next we have update on Milton Cat progress towards remediation, mediating generators and discussion of possible legal action if MNC had more knowledge of their inability to complete satisfactorily possible executive session, legal matter. Um, Dave, this is your ask, can you?
My, my ask, uh, runs like this. The issue, um, around the equipment that Milton Cat was supposed to recondition goes back, um, at least halfway through the, uh, Brodley era. And we had, it's one of the things I do not hold against John. I think that he had a series of promises which were made by, uh, Milton Pat in terms of when they would get in here and address issues, uh, with our equipment. Uh, we've got to be at least a year and a half down the road from those initial discussions and we find that we still do not have a completed project. It's my informal understanding that there are some controls or monitoring devices, um, which, um, our equipment has, which are obsolete, cannot be repaired. And I believe that that's, um, why we have not completed those projects. I think we need to find out what the answers are here. And I also happen to feel that if, um, Milton Cat has been, uh, unduly, uh, non-responsive to us and if we have made progress payments, we need to have discussion about, uh, how we're going to find some closure around this. I'm reluctant to, uh, wave, um, the, uh, swords at a vendor who I think in the past has been reliable, but come, come back to the Brodley era. Where, where's our closure? When's it going to pop?
Um, Kelly, can I ask, uh, do you have any, any, um, feedback for David?
No, I can't speak with a lot of specificity as to where or why, beyond the fact that Milton Cat, I don't believe the issue is with them per se. I think it's with whatever vendor they've been trying to source this particular part from. I think they share in our frustration about the lack of responsiveness and getting this last part. Um, but I really, I can't speak to where in the process or the timeline this part was originally put forward and the conversation around that. Again, that predates my time and Jeff's, so.
Dave? I'll be blunt. If the contract. Dave, I mean, what? If the contract to Milton Cat, it's Milton Cat problem. And that's, that's my bottom line.
So, um, Andy, go ahead.
So I have the original, um, bid or on the project, and there was no discussion about fixing a generator. It was all around the circuit breaker. Uh, the generator upgrades that they listed on there was replacing existing voltage. Provide load bank and cables for tuning and engine and switchgear tuning assistance. So there was nothing, is the original. The original, um, project was around the circuit breaker and, and how it interacted with the generator, not around this. I'll call it a catalytic converter kind of, uh, piece. That came after the fact, um, during the time that they were doing the, the work when, um, Mr. Brody. At that, that my recollection was something around. We can't get the certification because we don't have this part to be, uh. Uh, an emergency site. But Milton Cal was, that was not originally asked to, um, that was not part of the original bid on the project.
Boy, I want to make sure I'm understanding that. So we haven't paid for this part either. Or have I haven't paid for the part? We need this catalytic converter, so to speak, in order for us to be an emergency disaster center. Um, but without it, we're still functioning correctly and, and, and all of that, that, that.
Yeah, my, again, recollection was that. You, because you don't have this, we're bonded to catalytic converter, we just without. Engineers and understanding, I, but that's my understanding. It does something similar to a catalytic converter, but because you do not have that unit. Um, the state didn't sign off on saying that you're an improved site. It runs. It, it operates, uh, effectively and everything, um. But that has been just, um. The, the challenge of getting this part and it's not a part that can be, um, fabricated or anything of that nature. That is my understanding.
Any else any questions? I don't, I'm not sure if we need an executive session for this, um.
Yeah.
Sounds like, uh. What like we've been looking to it more, uh, Dave, go ahead.
Well. I think we need to get some clarity from Milton Cat, who apparently we contracted with. To begin with, as to, um, how we solve the problem. That Milton Cat tells us that they cannot solve our problem, or perhaps they can point us in the direction. Of an entity that helped us solve our problem with an awful lot of money apparently. In a system that we can't certify.
Can I, can I just give a favor, David? Can I ask you to put that into a shorter motion so we can vote on and give some direction to the administration and go forward?
Okay, um. I move that, um, we, uh, direct administration. To seek an update from Milton Cat as to what steps will be necessary to certify our.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Kelly stands up.
Oh, sorry, Kelly.
I don't know if we need that information prior to this.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I was just gonna note two quick things. One, I think the primary. Holdup with our lack of a catalyst monitoring system is less. About the emerg- ability to operate as an emergency shelter. And more specific to our ability to participate in the demand response program as we had done historically. So in the absence of that, we can't partner with GMP and look at potential cost savings for the building. Uh, my understanding is that catalyst monitoring system doesn't have any bearing on. Again, our ability to operate or be certified or permitted or anything like that. It's just really. If we want to go to this next level of re- rejoining that program, this is an integral part that we're required to have. To ensure compliance. That's my understanding. Uh, we do work with someone by the name of John Hinckley from All Four Consulting. And he has been our primary kind of permitting consultant as it pertains to the generators and the boilers and helping the school. Get back into compliance on both fronts. So. I just would name him as a potential resource to the board, maybe at a buildings and ground meeting, maybe at the full board meeting. Um, but I would also name that we have reached out to Milton Cat. They understand if we want to rescind the order with them. Again, I, I feel they share in our frustration. About the lack of, uh, updates from the supplier. In our last meeting with Steve Horton, we did ask if he had any other ideas for. Who might be able to partner with us. And so he was going to explore, uh, that on our behalf as well. Uh, so our next, I think, meeting with him is on the flip side of the holiday break on that Tuesday. I can reach out and see if he's got an update, um, on that sooner. So I just. Naming that those pieces were in motion and just wanted to provide that point of clarification as well.
Can I ask, Kelly, can I ask you a question before we, uh, vote? Um, do you want this, uh, building to do all those things with, uh, GMP and emergency response and all that? What, what's your pleasure?
I absolutely think that would be a valuable thing for the school to consider. Again, I think according to John Hinckley and those who are kind of in the know. Uh, in terms of those types of programs, I think there's a significant cost savings to be had for the school, um, if we can get the part. Uh, so I can ask John Hinckley in particular for some more, to kind of put some more updated numbers to what that could look like, if that's helpful for the board's thinking.
So if, um, if David, uh, rescinds his, uh, motion, that, that's something you would do, uh. Whether we direct it you or not, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Dave, what's your pleasure?
Okay, um, am I hearing a request to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I'm willing to withdraw and I would like to speak to the withdrawal of the motion. Um, I'm pleased to hear that, um, administration, these building administration deals this situation. That can be negotiated and will point out to the board. That the reason that you want to do that is, uh, I'm talking about be able to, um. Work with Green Mountain Power is when there's very high demand on the system, which typically will occur during the winter. Green Mountain Power will charge us a vastly higher rate for electricity during those periods. When we do not disconnect from their system at their request. So, um, we are spending, uh, you know, based on past experience in this building. A substantial multiple of what it should cost us to make our system fully compliant. Uh, during the period of time our system remains non-compliant. So I think it is. Um, an issue which has very substantial financial impacts on the UHS. I think we need to clean it up.
Thank you, Dave. But my good problem, I'm. Thank you, sir. Any, uh, any other feedback or anything? Sure, thank you.
Uh, Jason, can you clarify that as to what is being done then?
So Kelly is going to, um, whether we add a motion on the floor, uh, to direct the administration or not, Kelly's gonna. Talk to, uh, John Hinckley, uh, Steve Horton and, uh, see what they can do to, uh, find out from Milton Cat. Uh, so that we can get this, uh, going and, and fix.
So they're going to work with MCAT though, so we will have the answers that we need.
Yeah, yeah, or have not, maybe not the answers we need, but more answers than we have.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, seven D, set date eleven twenty seven twenty three for guidance department report. To the board, uh, this, this as an action item. Um, and the reason why I put this on the agenda is. We've, uh. We've asked, uh, more than a couple of times for guidance to come and give us a report, um. About, you know, how things were going, uh, staffing, you know, the list goes, you know, on and on. I just, we just want to. We want to, as a board. I think, I know that we want to do things directly. Um, and we're really, I think we're all doing a great job of that. And I want to just, you know, we have a lot of things coming up, like budgets and, and all those types of things and, and we, we need their help. And, um, you know, so it's, it's no longer, you know, they, a request, um, we. We'd like to see that. And so it's, uh, you know. An action item. So, uh, so that is my motion. I would like, uh, on November twenty seventh, for the guidance department, um. To come to the board meeting and give us a report on, on the guidance department. Right?
It was a fair to ask Kelly if this is something that falls in line with her as a principal. Wanting guidance here to present to us. And if so, take that route versus, uh, I just feel like during a motion, have someone come to a board meeting. Seems a little bit harsh. And so I guess my question to Kelly is, um, you know, as we have our listening tour and everything else. If the board wants guidance to come up, is that something you as a building administration? Or building administrator wants to see happen as we move forward? I guess for the budgetary process or?
All of it.
Or ever, all, all.
Uh, I'd like to tell you to respond.
Yeah, I guess a couple of things. One, there was the request from guidance to put forward, you know, their contribution to the listening tour. Which I did on their behalf. So I guess my first question about this potential motion is. One around intent, uh, and that the information that I felt the board was seeking was. That was honored in a, in a recent meeting. Um, and I would also note that. If there's budgetary needs, right, that are specifically tied to things that the, um, the school counseling team can answer. I think truly those answers are going to come through our work and that we're doing with K twelve. And the next meeting, you know, I think as I've previewed and Andy's previewed in his superintendent report. That process is still very much ongoing. Um, I'll be joining a handful of folks this Thursday, right, for that preliminary. Secondary report from K twelve. We're not going to have an opportunity to meet as a guiding coalition until after the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, so again, not knowing the specifics of what is at the root of this updated request. Um, I'm inferring, right, it's more answers about. Schedule, right, uh, in, for next year. And I would just reiterate that that process is ongoing. It's part of a larger team. And I do not anticipate anything new being able to be provided. On the twenty seventh beyond what's already been, um, I guess honored in the process. So, um. Yes, that's my answer in the absence of more clarity on the scope of the request.
Before, uh, David responds or I respond, June, you better answer.
Um, yeah, I know that when I joined the board two years ago, we wanted. All departments to come in and. Report to the board on how they thought things were going, what could help them. And, and then it fell by the wayside. So me personally. I want to take that on again and have all departments come and make a presentation, see. Let us know how things are going. Um. There are a couple, three of us that have kids here, so we kind of have some idea, but for the other seven of you guys. You don't know. So that's my personal feeling.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna, before I ask David, uh, Kelly, I, I think you did a good job presenting for them. And, uh, for me, it's kind of like the telephone game where, you know, they're giving you information, but then you're giving it to us, you know, I. I kind of want to hear it right from them. Um, and that was really. That's only my intent. Um, I, I think that, you know, whether it's good or bad, uh, you know, their, their passion that they bring is just, you know. Different than yours. I mean, they probably see the kids individually more every day and you're kind of, you know, at the fifty thousand foot view. Um, so that was, that was my, I just wanted to hear it directly from you guys. That's all. Dave?
Thank you, Jason. Okay, I anticipate one of this discussions, which is likely to take place with guidance. Kevin, the guidance table. At the budget table, when we meet again. Will be, um, a discussion of ground whether we are going to, um, take a closer look at. Um, class size policy, which is WNESU wide policy. And I think that if we, um, as a budget committee, uh, um, are going to. Give serious considerations of following the guidelines which are in policy for WNESU. That it would be extremely useful to know, um, what, um, guidance take is on it because I think to a very large. Rate, um, many of those impacts will, um, be impacting guidance. Like to know, I like to know what they think about it. And that's kind of my bottom line. And I appreciate the fact, Kelly. That you were tasked to represent them here over the summer and the fact that you did in fact do the best job you possibly could. Um, I think that we need to have a discussion, um, around how policy. In, uh, in regard to class size is going to, you know, one, impact budget. And two, impact, um, education here. So if you think you can do it without guidance, and I would be interested to hear your proposal, but I think it's a discussion that. Guidance ideally ought to be, uh, involved with.
So, uh, put a motion on the floor. Andy, do you want?
Just, I, I, I don't disagree, uh, with everything that's been discussed here. However, um, I, I do agree, um, strongly with June that. Um, it's not just from one department, it's from all departments. Um, because budgetary impacts and class size impacts and, um, staff impacts. Don't just impact guidance for, for school counselors, but they impact each and individual department. And I think it would be, um, approved. Uh, to hear from all departments and department chairs as opposed to just one. Small section. Yes, they have a, a good overview of what's going on, um, but in your analogy, a telephone game. Which I, I, I understand what you're saying. You've got a department chair. That, you know, voicing their concern or, or teachers voicing their concerns as department chair, department chairs voicing their concerns to. Uh, school councils and to administration, which is then brought to, to you all. And, you know, a decision potentially to increase class sizes in. PE. At one level, they sound like a, a right reason, but there may be a reason that I'm unaware of. That the, the PE department can answer better than even school counselor. So, like.
What about us? So.
Um, I don't think this should be in a formal motion. I think it's important that we hear from all the departments, but it's always been on a, a set up schedule that, that. The administration has simply set up a schedule and worked with the departments to see when they could come. Because there may be conflicting times that they have other responsibilities. That impact their, their ability to come to a board meeting at a specific time that can be adjusted by doing that. If, if you're wanting it for budgetary reasons, it is important, like Andy just said to us, that we hear from all of them and maybe we simply need to do a. A invitation rather than a motion, an invitation to. All of the chairs to come to be able to discuss that with us. It's much more friendly put in that kind of the challenge. And, and, you know, demanding one department. Just a suggestion.
This one, I don't have a question.
Uh, the question is to, uh, November twenty seventh, uh, can the guidance department, uh, come to our board meeting and give us a, uh, report? Okay, is there any other, other further question or discussion? Alright, if, uh, most on the floor then, uh. So, Rob?
No.
Okay. Jamie?
No.
What?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Uh, yourself? I wanted to, yes, uh, June, sorry.
Um, yes.
Darce? Priscilla?
No.
David?
Yes.
Alright, so I have one, two, three S's, one, two, three, five no's.
Yes, five no.
Okay. Alright, thank you. I'm moving on. Superintendent Report, informational.
Jason?
Yeah.
Would you ask the invite please?
Sure. So Kelly, what we'll do is for the next budget meeting, we will make an invitation to all of the uh, the chairs of the respective, uh, departments to come. And hopefully they can all come to the next budget meeting. Um, and they're welcome to come to any meeting.
I have a meeting with them at 2:50 tomorrow and I will absolutely relay the invite. I wholeheartedly support them coming. I don't want to, I just want to be clear about that. Um, but I do like the approach of the invitation. So thank you for that, Priscilla.
Yeah, the, the goal again is to, uh, to, to do things right. And, uh, you know, we, we really want to hear from them, uh, when it, in regards to, uh, you know, the policy that, policy that is already on the, in the books as far as, uh, class sizes. Thank you. Um, moving on, Superintendent Report, informational. Uh, Andy, do you update us on a new solutions K-12 scheduling staffing study?
I'm nothing update. We have a meeting, uh, as Kelly had indicated, uh, to go over their initial findings, uh, later this week. Uh, and then the, um, the, the guiding group that met with them earlier will be meeting, uh, just after, I think, the first week in December. Uh, they, they kind of go over, uh, that finalized report before the way we made this. And we are back.
Good. And, uh, let's go.
Do you accept the question?
Uh, yeah, let's do question list one first.
Okay, but I'm looking at a document called Project Timeline, um, which was part of, I think roughly 63 pages, uh, New Solutions K-12 that arrived in our inboxes. I think it was, uh, this morning. And I'm looking at, uh, an item called Share and Discuss Findings, October, November. Full appointment. So it's Prepare Report of Recommendation for Improving Secondary Schedules, October. Share Findings from Engagement Analysis for School and District Leaders, early November, which is where we are now, I think. Uh, Set Priorities for What Should Be Scheduled Also in November. I'm making a very large assumption here that, uh, when, uh, the new solutions document says share findings from engagement and analysis for school and district leaders, that there's a strong possibility that the board is considered to be, uh, a district leader or perhaps lead district leaders. And given the fact that, uh, the new solutions K-12 timeline suggests that that takes place in early November, um, I'm hopeful that we could get it soon because this is early November.
Yes, but, yeah, but so they're, they're behind in their timeline. Excuse me, sir. They're behind in their timeline. That was, I mean, they put that document together and we're, we're slightly behind in that timeline. Um, I do not believe that the indication when we talked to them was when they're talking about district leader, they're talking about central offices issue. The intent was to share the information with the board, but we had, they just did their interviews just prior to, just in October, and they're compiling their information and their data. And that's, so there's an initial meeting with, with our, and our secondary administration and our central office team. And then we're going to, they're gonna review that with us and we can make any recommendations to what we'd like to see kept in that report. And then we'll be providing that report out to, to, to others. So we're about, we're about two weeks behind.
About two weeks behind. Okay.
I think what I spoke to at the beginning, that they're meeting with us this week. And then just after Thanksgiving, meeting with the larger group. So, so.
Good. We're starting to look forward then.
Yeah.
Will the board see it before the public sees that?
When the board sees it, publics. If, if, I mean, I, I, once I've made a document available to the board, it's a public document. So. But it, but as soon as we have it available, we will make sure that it is up to it. David, do you have a question?
Uh, no.
Andy, I would like to, uh, offer an invitation to you, um, to, as soon as you have some knowledge on this, uh, new K-12 solutions to, you know, uh, get it out to, obviously, the public to quickly advise it. Um, so that, you know, it's, this, did everybody get a chance to read this, uh, or skim through the 69 pages that came in Andy's report today? Um, it's very, uh, very enlightening. It has a lot of, lot of, lot of stuff in here. I was going through it to see which pages, uh, you know, you know, you go through stuff and I got that as a, yeah, I want to get to the meeting of data, so I couldn't get rid of any of it. So 69 pages of useful information in here for administration, for the boards, for the public. So I encourage everyone to, uh, you know, dig into that. And I really liked how they said, uh, you gotta be creative in how we make schedules and how we staff buildings and, you know, I kind of like that because it's not 1960 or large 2003. We got a new way to do it. So possible, who knows? Um, all right, uh, Andy, uh?
I just have a, a question on the PCVs. Did, do you have any idea when we're going to start source testing?
I don't believe Kelly, is that, yeah, she can answer.
Sure. So when I spoke to Greg and Evan Thursday, Friday, uh, it sounds like, uh, well, I guess a couple of things. We got permission to recalibrate the carbon filters in the C wing beginning today, which means that they will come back and retest the air just in the C wing sometime, I think around the 29th or 30th of November. And that's just to make sure that the reduction in those filters is still having an actionable impact on that space. Kind of like what we saw on the D wing. Um, the University of Iowa is picking up their samples this Friday. Those samples, I think I'm, if memory serves, may take about four to six weeks to begin processing. The results of that are going to inform Greg and Chris's work with VHB or through VHB to then do the source of investigation work, I believe, beginning right around the new year. So, uh, once they have that data set in hand from the University of Iowa, again, that's going to give them really good intel on not only potential sources, but which of the potential sources is contributing the most PCVs to air quality, uh, which will help VHB to really hone in on the most likely culprit of what's contributing to the problems in our building. Um, they will also be back in February for quarterly air sampling of the full building. That's the current timeline barring any other. I'll call it hiccups to the process, but as of Friday, that was the latest.
Thank you.
Andy, uh, update on availability of S R funds for high school infrastructure projects? Yeah, so currently, um, what we have allocated in S R, it's our art project is, uh, for the science project wing, uh, there's, uh, $1,350,000 allocated. And for the HVAC system, there's $3,017,275. Um, what we continue to do is as we go through on a monthly basis, uh, of looking at art with the business office, is any dollar that we can, uh, we don't need allocated for another project, we push into these two projects. Um, so that, uh, we can, uh, get as many dollars into that. Uh, I have a meeting with the state, uh, later this week, uh, just because of the complexity of our projects. Um, we've got to do a lot of explaining to them of how we're looking at going them. Uh, but again, we haven't, the bids haven't been finalized yet. And so, um, having a, a, a final, where are we on, on things, we then come back to the board and say like, hey, this, you know, this project is, you know, $900,000, would you like us to allocate funds to go ahead and move forward on that project? Uh, we're just not at that point yet. Uh, but that's determining where we are. Any questions on that?
There? Yes. Um, I did read the superintendent's report and, um, I believe that it, among other things, Andy said that Steve Orton was, uh, working on soliciting bids. Um, I have no idea what's going on with both the school districts. I believe that, um, this board did, um, authorize a request to, uh, uh, go out for the creation of bid specs for HVAC. Um, and I believe that ME Engineering, uh, got that bid to produce bid specs. And I'm uncertain as to whether this board actually has ever, ever authorized going out to bid on HVAC. So I'm hoping we can get some clarity around that, if not tonight, um, in the very near future. I spent quite a bit of time, uh, reading through the new solutions K-12 reporting. I did not have as much time as I hoped I would, so I could go back and search the minutes looking for those items. I imagine that if we're going to do something in science, that we would need to create bid specs for the science renovation project. And, um, then once we have received bid specs, we will need to agree as a board, put that project out to bid. So, um, I appreciate the work Steve Orton is doing. But I, I have to say I have some confusion in my own mind as just exactly where we stand in that process. So if there's anyone, uh, at the table who knows, um, if and when this board actually put HVC, HVAC out to bid, I would love to know about it. And if no one does, it's fine. I'll go back, go home tonight and start going back through the minutes and looking for it.
So David, my recollection was when we as a collective, uh, SU went out for, um, looking at construction management, uh, projects, uh, that was part of the uh, override bid was to do those two projects. And that was, uh, that construction management team, uh, that won the bid for that, that was part of their projects was to, was to do the HVAC and to get specs and to get bids on what those projects will be. We're still waiting on them. They got put on hold because of PCVs. So we're just at the point where we're just now getting. So when Hutter, which is the, the company, they're using Yemeni bid specs that were authorized by this board to go out and they've been getting bids based on those bid specs that you, you all paid $160,000 for to, to move forward with that bid spec.
Okay, I guess there's still some confusion in my mind. It's not clear to me that this board has ever actually authorized, um, uh, putting, uh, the, um, proposed renovation out to bid based on the bid specs that this board did authorize. Are you suggesting, Andy, that the supervisory union, um, has put the high school HVAC out to bid?
So David, I don't know that specifically. I, I can, I can say that I have spoken almost monthly about the projects and how much the projects are going to cost and what we're trying to do. Nobody has said, don't do that. In fact, my understanding is the consensus of the board is to continue to move forward with the projects. Um, I repeatedly tried to update the board on a consistent basis of what things are. No one has ever said, where are the bid specs? We need to vote on these things. Uh, we, we brought it to the board. These are the costs that will be forward. Uh, we had, at least, I believe that we had consensus and, and direction from the board to move forward on those. And at no time, so I guess I apologize because at no time did anyone ever say, hey, wait a minute, stop. We got to go back and, and authorize this because we were moving forward, looking at large projects to bring in that. And that was part of the whole bigger bid was to move forward. And if this board had a concern, I would have expected that the board would have voiced some concern over a year ago when we started to go out to bid.
Andy, what, and what I'm hearing, are you suggesting in so many words, this board has not authorized putting HVAC out to bid?
Uh, it, it's quite possible that you have not voted to go out to bid. I mean, we, we've said that this is the cost of the project, would you like us to move forward? And it was my understanding that yes, we would be moving forward with that project.
Well, with all due respect to the agenda and, uh, members' time, I think it'd be very useful if we could get, um, a legal opinion as to whether this board does in fact have an obligation to authorize, uh, bidding on a capital project, um, of that scope and magnitude. Because I think it would be an awful big mistake to find out down the road that we have to go back to square one with S R funding running out on us very quickly. So I am, uh, suggesting that it would be, who of us will understand what the implications are, um, of not having authorized a bid for HVAC?
Well, are you, um, I'm sure I'm understanding your question. Are you suggestion that, suggesting we take a motion to seek legal counsel for this or are you?
I'm, I'm reluctant based on our, uh, previous discussions tonight to put it in the form of a motion. I think that, uh, much as we request input, um, from, uh, the, uh, departments, including guidance, um, here at the high school, um, in the budgeting process. I think that it's appropriate, um, to request that administration seek legal guidance as to whether we have a legal obligation to formally put the project out to bid.
So, uh, Priscilla, before I answer your, uh, is your question what David is? I was gonna ask any question.
It has to do.
Fire away.
Um, I, I think there's some convoluted stuff here that we're not, not considering. This is an S R project. We as a board voted 1.5 of, uh, million of our, um, capital improvement fund to go for this project as well. Um, as backup for that in case we needed it. So we've done that. Have we, haven't we also voted on Orton being in charge of going ahead with getting bids and that kind of thing? Have we done that as this board? I know we've done that as the SU board. So if we've also done that as this board, some of that could cover us as well. That's just additional information that, that might impact on some of these things. Um, and I think where it got somewhat mixed up is because it's S R funding to begin with. And so that S R funding has been through grants through the SU. Um, and that, and so we as, as board members going to the SU also voted on all of those things. So we were represented in that, but like David says, it's a question as to whether we also just need a backup vote on this board. This way I'm looking at what David said, whether he.
Andy, can I, uh, thank you, Priscilla, David. Andy, can I ask you, uh, how much of the time suck would that be to, uh? Uh, at, and I, uh, I have a good, I don't know. So not that much, huh? Is that, uh, satisfied, David? So? Yeah, all right, let's do that and then we'll kind of move forward. And hopefully we can put all of that back so we can, or progress.
Andy, just for transparency, the science lab, the science wing, is that 100% S R money?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, yeah.
Thank you both on that. Andy, any else on, uh, your report or, uh, not on S R funds? Anything else in general you want to go over or? Andy, you're back again Wednesday live. They go over it again if you want. Everybody else is doing.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Um, up next we have, uh, a couple very generous donation requests. Um, Kelly, I was hoping we could, uh, kind of let us know what they are so we could, uh, what else? You don't mind?
Sure. I don't have the exact, uh, letters in front of me, but I know one. Uh, does someone have that copy of the letter? Sure, I don't have the exact, uh, letters in front of me, but I know one, uh, does someone have that copy of the letter? I know one came from Larry Slosson and a client that he represents, there was a four thousand donation, four thousand dollar donation. That was made to our athletics program, can someone read who that was from?
So I, I can, uh, I can read that for you, I have that email in front of me, uh. Says, dear Kelly, our office represents River Charities Incorporated enclosed, please find our client's check in the amount of four thousand dollars payable. To Bell's Falls Union High School, representing its contribution in support of sports activities, very truly yours, salmon and no shrimp. Very slices.
Thank you.
Who wants to add for motion?
Why are you, David?
My motion is to accept the generous, um, donation of four thousand dollars from. Our River Valley's charities.
Uh, so, uh, all those in favor, just let's say aye. So move. Uh, thank you, everybody, now we have one more, Kelly, um, can you go around, I, I actually don't have that one in front of me.
We need to get that one in our packet.
Yeah, sure, so that one was more, um, just, I guess it's, uh, seeking forgiveness. Not so much permission in the sense that there were, uh, many generous families who made a donation to support our football team. Uh, having a private coach to the semifinals about a week and a half ago. Um, and I think a number of families had pooled those donations and, uh, our, um. Rebecca had received a number of checks from various families to support that, there was one check that had come in over that thousand dollar threshold. Uh, so one family, I think, made a larger contribution, there it is right there, um, and that was either on behalf of a handful of families. Anyways, that check came in over that threshold, um, after, after the trip had happened. So I think that Monday after that Friday trip, so that's, that's where this is coming into play, that's just a, um. I guess a formal acknowledgement, uh, of the, of the generosity of those families for that support, if that makes sense.
Uh, the, the check is from Rocky Hand Charities Limited, it's made out to the Bell's Falls Union High School for twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Um, for the, uh, football bus, and I cannot make out the gentleman's, uh, signature, uh, maybe weigh it on. Jared?
Um, so you said you received that after we paid for the bus, or the parents had paid for the bus? So this is in addition?
No, that, that's to go towards the bus, just that they, um, those checks were coming in. Um, and I think that one came in either the day of or that following Monday to our attention, if that makes sense. So we had already booked the bus, um, and, and gave permission and supported the families in doing that. And this was just kind of a late arriving, um, contribution for that.
So did we get enough for the, with the parent donations to pay for the bus?
That is my understanding, yes, it's just that this one check happened to come in over a thousand dollars. And that's why we're just following process and bringing that to your attention.
Who wanted to make that motion, Marcy's going to make that one?
Sure, make a motion to accept the jet from River and charities, that would, for twelve fifty.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
They oppose? Hey Kelly, I like the style of begging for forgiveness, just do it, I like it.
Just wanted to be clear about what I was doing.
So just, we have a protocol that if, uh, a donation comes in over a thousand dollars, the board is supposed to accept it. It can be after the bag, but, but typically, we just like to let the boards know because if people are donating money, you all should know.
Very generous by those people, so, uh, as, as a chair, I thank those, uh, people who did that, so very, very nice. Alright, moving on, we have a resignation, um, and for this one, we will need, uh, executive session. Uh, Dev, can I ask you to bring us into executive session?
It actually did contract.
Yeah, okay. That's all I'm. Okay, alright, um, I, I moved the subordinate executive session to discuss a, um, a contract matter. Uh, where it was clearly stated that, um, the, yeah, so that, um, future. Uh, knowledge by public puts a, a possible suspension or a big disadvantage or the privacy of a person's question. If that, basically, yeah, I'm trying to say, um, I have one section.
Alright, so we have an executive, uh, so the motion for executive session, uh, all those in favor? They oppose? Like administration, or?
Uh, well, yeah.
Yes. You're on, okay, and we are back out of executive session, we're up for time. So, uh, Andy, if I could, could I have you explain, uh, what?
Yeah, my resignation is a whole lot the actual, so I can speak to it easily, um, but, um, so, um. Um, Kelly, the names just went right out of my head.
Susan Sparanda.
Susan Sparanda, who is your school librarian, has submitted her resignation. Uh, effective June period, uh, and she, um. Submitted that resignation, of course, I'm not gonna find it, I'm not gonna find it.
Before August, uh, October?
Uh, it's section sixteen point six, the collective bargaining agreement, which is retirement incentives. And so it's a teacher who has at least, who is at least fifty, and has at least twenty years of service in the district, who announces their retirement. And has enrolled in the district's four oh three plan, shall be eligible for the, for a seventy five hundred dollar retirement stipend. And the teacher, uh, must make the application for retirement stipend on or before October first, and so, uh. We're just bringing it to you a little late, I apologize, it's just, she had submitted that on time, and we just didn't get it on the agenda earlier.
So I just wanna make sure I'm hearing correctly, everything is done, the, sees your cross, eyes are dotted? Any, uh, any questions for, for Andy?
They're completing the year, though, they're, they're.
Yeah, so they, they have to complete the year, and then it's paid out on October first, so that's all spelled out in sixteen point six.
By August first, it's paid by August first.
So, um, we need a motion on those, correct, and, correct, alright, can I get a motion for so?
Uh, yeah, I make a motion that we accept Susan Sparanda's letter of resignation effective June thirty of twenty twenty four. And, um, paper, we need stipend that she has settled before.
Alright, all those motion for any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? They oppose? Congratulations to Sparanda. Alright, um, so we skipped, uh, we're skipping, uh, athletic director, we're making, so we're on a. Committee updates, uh, so here we have some new policies we need to take action on.
I guess, we have two policies that were warned on nine twenty two, twenty three. The selection of library materials and the selection of instruction materials, um. They should have been in your packet so that you could read those, um, does anyone have any questions? Oh, let me do a motion first, I move that we, um, approve policy through twenty two, selection of library materials. Three, uh, selection of instructional materials.
Motion on four, any questions, yeah?
Um, I just have one, um, it says in the policy that schools with over three hundred students. Shall have at least one full-time library media specialist and sufficient staff to implement a program with, uh, that supports literacy. Is that a W N E S U policy, that's a state?
It's a state, of course. Thank you.
Right, so there's a motion on the tour, any of the discussion? Alright, uh, all those in favor, personal motions? Close? Motion is passed, and for so, again, thank you for all you do with that.
We will have another policy, um, fundraising that will be, if it has not been posted already, it will be posted. We also have a condom on our comments, because those are required in our schools now by the state. And for our comment that are being put in there, so if you watch for those on the website.
And those are, those are gonna be coming down, uh, next month?
They should be coming down, we approved them in September, like September's meeting.
Can you get those to run?
We had to, the, the funding of our common had to go to our attorney for, um, venting because it wasn't printed out. From the, like, state loan, fundraising, racing loan was only printed out, that we could just adjust slightly and make it. Applicable to our schools so that we didn't have to go to the midterm, it would have been better by state. That those should be posted shortly, and they have not been on.
Right, thank you, so, alright, um, up next, we have, uh, norms, uh, possible action. So, on a, we have a norms committee, and that's, uh, June, Rob, and Jimmy, who'd like to speak on, what do you guys, you guys come up with?
Um, I can start the discussion, so our committee met, um, we reviewed the survey that we put out, um, to this board. That had, um, ideas for goals and norms, we took that survey, we reviewed it, and the goals and norms that. Um, you all rated those, um, those that participated, the ones that floated to the top got the highest rating. Um, we have put together in a document and present to you all now, and that is what you are seeing here. Um, I would like to make a motion that we move to accept the goals and norms listed here, um, and we adopt them. With that, right, but I would like to make a motion to adopt the norms and goals that have been voted on.
Any, uh, any discussion? Yep?
First time we see them, I mean, first time, seeing them speak, um, I don't think that they're. I think that some of them are concerning to me, definitely, um, and the goals, I think that these are more, more college leaning. That there's nothing to hear about tech schools or kids who are not heading for college, you've got that right there. Yeah, remember, two, yep, and that, to me, that is not where we have been moving forward on. Talking about alternative locations to college, and that's what schools typically do. Um, that is what's been done in the past for decades and decades, but that's not really where students are moving these years, these days, and these years. I think that ought to be altered, uh, so just because, just that one, um, not to mention, I would prefer to see some of the background data on the norms. Um, I would think we should move this to the next, give us a couple of weeks to. Run it around in our heads, ask additional questions, that sort of thing, I know, um, I'm, I'm concerned about some of the way the norms are awarded. It almost, they're almost insulting, um, not necessarily personal, but maybe some people, these look like they're pointedly pointed at. Um, so I would, I would think that we could use a couple of weeks to review that, just so we can think about how they impact us, what we think about in the future. I don't think we go to one meeting, having just seen the separate policies, and we don't have an opportunity to wait.
So is, um, so if I, I wanna make sure I'm hearing you, are you suggesting? Are you, uh, suggesting at the table, or?
I'm suggesting we, with them on the next meeting, twenty seven, giving us an opportunity to perhaps, um, go over. And I can do a whole list of things that I have questions on, and send it to the notes committee, and see what, what's that, I just. I, I, maybe I'm the, I'm the only person who are proud here who thinks that that's a good idea, but, that's, that's what I'm asking.
I, I have an opinion, but I'd like to hear you out first.
Yeah, so, um, when this committee met, we solicited feedback from everyone on this board. Put everything that was said to us, went out on a survey for you all to vote. So really, this is a collective, that the results that you see are a collective response. From those that filled out the survey, so to say you haven't received this, this has been going on for. A little bit over a month now, where we've communicated, we've asked for feedback, we sent out a survey. We numbered the survey, we reviewed the survey, and that's why we're bringing this forward. Um, you know, I think, I can't speak for the norms, but from a goal standpoint, this is something this board. Should have had done one of the first meetings on the reorganization, that's in March. And we are now talking about this in November, and I do understand that March is right around the corner. And we're gonna have to do this again, but at least it gives us, similar to our buildings and grounds, three to five year plan of what's going on. It gives the next board a template, and they don't have to, uh, want any of it, but this is, what you're seeing on this document. Is a collection of information from everyone on this board. And voted on, so?
I'd like to respond to that, if I may, to you. And my response is, uh, did the entire board get a copy of your results with all the weigh-ins? I mean, this is what you come up with, but, but based upon that, we all know how these weighed in. As far as, you know, number one choice, number two, number six, so on and so forth, did you send this to feedback, I? No, but I can review, I can address that if you'd like me to, well, if you verbally address it, I actually won't be able to see it. Um, that's why I'm asking for it today, that was, that was one, and that's my only response to what I'm saying.
Alright, we got lots of questions, so Persil, or hand up first, so go ahead, Persil.
Um, I really appreciate all the work that the, um, members of that, that committee did, and I feel that they have gone through. And as they said, they have weighted them according to our requirements and what we would, and what we decided. I would also like to address the fact that my colleague over there said, commented on number two goal, it says career ready. And that's what, that's what our, um, recovery team actually came up with. That's almost the exact same thing that is in their, um, what is it? What is it, what's it called?
So it's, it's part of our.
Their procedure, not that procedure.
Part of our recovery plan, and, but, but it's also the state's, college career readiness is, is the state's language.
It, yeah.
That's how the state.
But how does, okay, and then how do you respond to kids who want to go to tech school? I'm sorry.
Because they are ready to go out, and once they graduate, they're ready to take on a career, job, position. Anything that's related to those two things, so that does cover that totally. And is in keeping with what, what our guidelines were for the recovery and from the state. Um, I would like to comment on the, on the seventh norm, because, yes, I. I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I see the way it's written, and I think it's fine, but you keep in mind, um, as a board chair. I'm very familiar with this concept, because as a board chair, you are chair at the meeting. You are responsible outside of the meeting only for what the board has directed. What the board has given you permission to do. You should not be doing anything else outside of the meeting, you are just like any other member of the board. And all of us are only members of this board at this meeting, and only have authority at the meeting. That is a really clear concept, outside of the meeting, you are a community member, you are not a board member. And if you're on a committee, then you're on that committee as a board member, yes, and you're serving at that time. But keep in mind, that's, that's an important concept that people have not been paying attention to. And that's one of the same point, some of these things are important, a lot of these things are addressed in our policies. A lot of them have not been given a follow-up in our policies, so having these norms for the board, I think is a good thing, thank you.
Marcy?
Good.
I, I just wanted to, um, point out that we didn't pick and choose which norms and goals. We took the top seven ranked norms and put it on this list. And we took the top five goals that people here voted on. Um, and put them as our balls, so I just wanted to point out, we didn't pick and choose. You guys picked and chose who participated in the balls.
Right, Jamie, can I ask you some questions, as the chair just made? How many, how many of us board members filled out the survey? How many, how many of us board members filled out the survey?
Um, the survey, I can tell you how many people voted. I'm, I can't remember how many filled out the survey. Five people voted. Um, and probably five people filled out the survey.
So half, right?
Half, yeah.
Why is that?
Some people decided it was the work of the committee, um, and chose not to make this statement. Some people did not.
Or did I not fill it out?
How would we know?
I didn't know that.
It's anonymous.
So I asked, and I said that to everyone, I asked that we resend it and jumble up their questions. I said that to Kate and, cause she sent it to the Bell's small junior high school board, which went to. Uh, Stacy Shaughnessy, Ricky Adams, and some other people that are on that email list, not board members. So how do we know that of those five people? Some of those people didn't fill it out. How do we know? Cause it was never reset. So that's why they fill it out. So that's, that's why I'm kind of wary of asking this. And the other thing for me, and I, I credit the work you did, um, because it's not easy. It's time consuming and time is super valuable. Um, but like, if I'm looking at the goals. I don't really see one through four. I think five is perfect. Um, but I don't like, how do you measure improved collaboration with the supervisor union and Bell's logic? Union High School Administration to ensure that we are working for the stakeholders or communities and the growth of our students as they prepare for life? How do you measure that? How, what's the, you know, what's the checking points that, I mean, if you're writing a goal, we gotta write. Specific measurable, attainable, and you fail to track it. So it's just a question. That's, that's why I personally don't like it.
I think not every goal has to be, um, something that you can measure in that moment. I think they can be goals that we wanna attain. You know, when it comes to collaboration, I mean, some things can be including people in, you know, meetings and getting tabs on different things that are happening. You know, we can strive for these things without being like, oh, you know, we increased participation by thirty percent. So I think there are ways, you know, we shouldn't shy from goals that we can't, you know, get hard numbers on and have data on. I think it's important to have some goals that are lofty and things that we're striving to achieve.
So I, I agree with what you're saying. So one of the charges that have been brought to our attention, right? Is that we don't work, we're not working, we're not good team players. Um, however, like. How, you know, are we, is that still gonna be the thing five years from now? How are we gonna know that we're better team players?
You can take that goal and, and make it specific and ask for something to be done.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking.
But you have to have the goal in order to figure out the second layer of that, whether you do a survey or listening tour or something like that.
Right. And so, and then the other thing for me is, um, I have two more to bear with me. Uh, so Wednesday, there, uh, Cheryl has on her agenda, at the W N E S U is the, um. Forgive me, Andy Wood, uh, it's the, uh. So Cheryl's coming out with bylaws that we're gonna be voting on, which then goes to each board. And then we're gonna have other bylaws. So then, if that passes, which I assume it will, because those are bylaws that are already written. That we're gonna vote on, and then have to go to each board, Rock and Board, this board, Westminster Board, get the vote on. So then there's gonna be yet again, more bylaws, and then you have these. And then we also have the handbook that we, you know, would try to follow. So it's just, seems like a lot of. To me, it seems like a lot of rules.
So if I could just sit off with some clarification. The S U board cannot vote on by the bylaws. Those have to be voted on by the separate districts. They will, they will, they give the power to the S U board. So, so you won't be voting out there, but you will be looking at them again and agreeing that you wanna take it back to your local boards. So that the by, those bylaws are governing for the S U, not for this board. Each, each board yearly is supposed to establish goals. And those norms for each board. So, uh, in March, when, when you are. When you are, uh, when we do our reorg. Each board is supposed to vote or is supposed to establish goals. And they might be looking at their goals from the year before and saying, yeah, we want to continue those goals, or, or establish new goals. Typically for boards, those goals are more lofty, as, as Jamie was saying, they're, 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 they're things you're striving for and obtaining. There may be some very specifics, we want to do X this year. And so that, that's something, so. It's, it's, a- again, just the establishing of some goals is not. For each board is not out of the norm. It's, it's actually what you're supposed to do as part of your governance. And then also what is recommended is that boards do self-evaluation, do self-evaluations for the sixties. Um, on, on a regular basis to give that feedback. Um, from their constituents, not necessarily just, you know, um, within, internally within themselves, so. Um, and, and I think back in March, I encouraged all boards to try and work towards establishing some goals. Um, it, it's, it's been challenging. I'm not gonna, um. You know, um, sugarcoat that. It's been challenging to get boards to really hammer down. I think there's one or two boards that really have some long lasting goals. Um, but in. And I'm only speaking selfishly when, when, as administration, when we're trying to move forward. Having, knowing where the goals are, it helps direct us and, and. And what we're bringing and what we're looking for. So that, that's the only reason why I will always encourage that we be goals. Is those goals are the goals that you wanna set forth for this, this building. Um, and, you know, you talk about a legacy with a capital improvement. That's, that's one of, that could be a goal that we will. Um, you know, that we will establish capital improvement plan and, and will constantly work for it. That helps drive the goals to see. So I, I don't want you to think that it's extra work. It's, it's work you're supposed to do.
Well, so I, I agree with that. I'm, I'm fully on board with goals. I live my life by goals. But, so I guess I'm asking the, the committee here, consider taking your motion up the floor. Take these back and write some specific goals, like provide support and opportunities necessary to ensure that all. Bell's while union high school students are college and career ready and receive the appropriate individual support needed to reach graduation requirements. So to me, in my brain, I'm, I'm thinking all, if one person doesn't get out of the school, we failed. And yes, that is true. We did fail. So we look at our numbers last year. You know what I mean? Those are, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking for more specific, like, and I wanna do them. I just would like it to be. Better. Right?
Yeah, I'm trying not to get frustrated by this. Um. This committee has solicited feedback from every member of this board. Received that feedback, went another step, put it in a survey. I don't know how simple, more simple we can do this. The other way, which I've done in previous years, is we all do this together, which is. How I've, have I been a part of boards so that we can have that dialogue? That we can have those conversations, cause those are important and valuable. But this board voted to have a commit. And so this is the work of the committee via every member's input from this board. And so for that, I would like to put him, Jamie, you, did you have a motion?
Yes.
Motion is on the floor. Um, and if I could just speak to your question privately, it, it's not, not every, not every member. Did it, you said, every member has, has done this. Not every, only happened.
Every member had an, had a, had multiple opportunities to give input to this process.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Any, any else?
I'd like to comment that we have these for basically three months out of the year. If we put this off, we're down to maybe having them for two bucks. You're looking at something for three months that certainly all of us should be able to live with. They worked really, really hard. And I appreciate them.
Anybody else? Alright, motion on the floor. Think about it. David?
Yes.
So.
No.
Sorry?
No.
Yeah.
The motion on, on the floor. Now, we didn't do.
No, 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 that.
Sorry about that. I was questioning because he said to table. And I'm going, no, I don't want a table.
David, you wanna do these norms? Yes. Priscilla?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rob? Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you for your time.
Alright. Uh, we're over here. Uh, negotiations, uh. Informational possible executive session. Um, so we had a, uh. June, who's on the negotiations? You're gonna start the meeting over? I lost the connection to the board.
Is, is, no one in here?
No, we're, you're not in executive session.
But if there's anyone in here, I can hear.
I lost the board. I didn't listen to it.
Okay, that word is not on.
Alright, so we can just continue?
Yeah.
Priscilla?
So June, sorry, who was it? Who was that negotiations?
Priscilla, Mike, and myself.
That's for high school?
Uh, no, no. Mike is. I'm S U and Priscilla's rock, yeah, right? So.
You said you're W N S U?
Yes. So Mike's our representative.
For high school. Okay, um, so we had a meeting last week. I think we need to go into executive session. I'm gonna be talking about that.
I would recommend.
So, um.
Oh, here we go.
So. As far as, uh, people going into executive session now. So I, I would feel uncomfortable with Rob going into executive session.
Who's teacher? I think it would be appropriate to ask Rob what Rob's feelings are about it. I apologize.
Thank you, David. Uh, I would like to be in executive session. If it, if it's dealing with teacher contracts, I will remove myself from discussion and voting.
He just can't discuss or, or, or vote.
Yeah.
Able to hear. Besides, which we shouldn't be having much to say at this point anyway.
We really don't.
Yeah.
We can't.
Probably what we, what we. Say in open session, so.
No.
I'm, I'm just saying we could without it being really that much of a problem, but.
June, can you bring us into executive session?
I move that the board enter into executive session to discuss, um, negotiation, teacher negotiations. Um. And, uh, in pursuant to Title One, Section Three, One, Three, A. Under one negotiation or securing real estate. Or lease options, B S A.
No.
No?
She's trying.
Priscilla, if you wanna make that motion?
She's trying.
Yeah, I know she is, but it's not lease options.
But it's all together. Okay, um, I moved that the board enter into executive session to discuss negotiations. Um. And where public.
That's on the upside.
Where general, where premature general public knowledge of the teacher negotiations completely place the municipality. At a substantial disadvantage.
Who do you have to bring into executive session? Go on administration.
Um, I don't think they need to. No.
Executive session and not, no action, uh, will be taken. Alright, up next, uh, A B W N E S, W N E S U budget update info.
Mike? Sure, uh, we had the S U finance committee meet last week. Uh, Jim, you see, and it provided, uh, his latest version, Andy's latest version of the budget. Uh, and I, you know, I, I. I'm concerned. I mean, I don't know how to put it, but the assessments coming back to this board, the high school board. The last one we looked at, it's up twenty eight percent over the year. And so that's roughly half a million dollars. So that's, if nothing else in our budget changed, our budget would be up six, almost seven percent just based upon the S U. So on, just putting that news out there, that information out there. Um, and we've got Andy here, so we can talk about it. Uh, we did, we did ask, first, did we did ask Andy? We went through a lot of things. You know, there's, there was catch up in this budget. The buses, the transportation, you know, that we did the leases on several buses. So that, that was a one-time hit. And that, I think for our, uh, assessment, that was sixty. Uh, sixty thousand of the five hundred thousand. But the real, the real killer is the, the. Special ed piece, which in our case, again, is roughly three hundred and thirty thousand of the increase. Um, again, it's good news and bad news. Good news, the, the good news is it started, the assessment started at, up forty percent. Andy went back, did some work, he's brought it now, down, still it's up twenty eight percent. And we've also had Jim to go back and take a look at salary piece, uh, which he had embedded a seven percent increase. Uh, across the board and he's gonna take that down to five percent. So we'll see what those numbers look like. Um, but the bottom line is, it's gonna, it's gonna have a big, uh, impact in our budget. Uh, that alone is gonna, as I said, that, that alone is gonna drive our budget pretty, pretty aggressively. And there's things we wanna do in our own budget, whether it's the capital pieces. Uh, you know, obviously the transportation is really kind of part of the infrastructure. Taking a first step on that with the actions on the lease, but the numbers are pretty. I, so, uh, I, I also do have something, and, and I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, June, were you at that meeting also? Were you at the S U meeting? Now, Priscilla, I think was there. Um, I also know Andy's here, obviously, if anybody wants to get into that.
I have a question. Um, can you explain to everyone, including public, what does assessment mean from, what does that word mean for us?
Right, um, that is, um, the way I think of it, and you can probably do better than I, uh, this. I think of the issue as, in an organization corporate, if you will, there's certain things at the corporate level. That get distributed down through the organization, you know, or in a business, it's marketing, it's that type of stuff. In our case, it happened, the big piece, the special education cost, unfortunately. Uh, the legislature made decisions that has reduced the amount of funding that we're getting. And in the meantime, in the meantime, our costs are going up after that, the students were referred into special ed. Uh, so, uh, it, it's corporate expenses that get relocated out to all the districts. Uh, you know, we honestly have a big piece of that. You know, the dollar we're talking about, roughly two million dollars into a seven million dollar budget for our high school. Um, so I don't, I mean, if I did that justice, but if there's anything we want to add.
No, I, I, I think that's fairly accurate, that, I mean, it's the assessment of what it costs to run the S U. Um, which includes special ed, finance, um, and curriculum. Um, is, as Mike said, I mean, special ed was a considerable hit. We did not expect. Uh, to see that block ran. I mean, we thought that, uh. You know, we got hit by this, this year, but didn't think it would be that big a hit. Uh, although there was a. Uh, although there was a, uh, the AOE sent a letter this year saying, oops, we miscalculated, so we took a ninety thousand dollar hit this year. That we weren't anticipating. Uh, and then, um, as Mike said, like, three thirty, three forty, uh, thousand, that block grant. Is the change away from the census grant that we used to operate under in the state, uh, where there was a reimbursement. Or not. We were under reimbursement grant, uh, and so there was a percentage, like fifty-six percent of, of, uh, the cost of. A special ed teacher or a paraprofessional, that was reimbursed pretty well, but now we're on a census grant, which is. We get one big block, and it's based on long-term membership. And it's, and it's from back three years, and they look at those, those over those three years, so.
I, 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 I think in, in part. More and more teachers are referring, you know, most students to special ed to deal with some emotional issues. Or it was obviously, and that also states the reaction to the growth rate of the special ed spending in, in, across the state. Or what the motivation was to, but it, it, it seems kind of counterintuitive in that. The need is going down, the funding is going down.
Uh, a little bit of that, that, it goes back to Act One Seventy-Three, which was prior to my time, uh, coming into Vermont. Um, but it was a, a move, uh, there, away from, let me say, the, the reimbursement grant. Uh, some of it was to try and control or stem costs, but the real. The real driver of Act One Seventy-Three was to, um, institute multiple tiers. Uh, of support for students, NPSS, uh, for students, which is a regular ed initiative. Um, but there was no cheap putting the regular ed fees, but there was the funding fees for special education. So the hope is by, by pulling back on the special ed costs, that sense. That regular ed is, is increasing their ability to work with all students. And so we've begun that work, we use a lot of extra funds to, to really see that. Uh, and, and looking how we can move forward, but it definitely, uh, what hurts us is as. Our overall, overall attendance. Long-term membership attendance decreases. You're, you're got, so you have less students in your buildings, so therefore the number of students in special ed, even if they stayed stable. You're gonna have an increased cost on the local budget, because you have an decrease in your overall average. Um, hold on. So I also saw something about benefits, um, sixteen percent benefits, what, what is that all about?
So health, health insurance went up sixteen. Greater or sixteen point four, sixteen point, uh, so overall health insurance benefits did go up, uh, for all of those.
Can be a challenge, or is there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to point out that the insurance also went up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, which is, yeah. Again, this, people should really pay attention when they vote for their state officials, because they have a lot to say about. What the contribution rate is, um, so, as well as how we govern our schools. Um, they have a lot of great ideas, but not much follow-through.
That's pretty well said. Uh, so.
Yes, I'm just wondering, the SU budget. Has no other place to get its funds except to assess it back to the, um. Regular boards, the whole of boards, because their money comes from the taxpayers as well. But they can't, they can't ask for that money directly, they, people don't vote on it. In that budget, they vote for it, in your budget, on the assessment points, so the assessment point is where that amount of money is put into each budget. And then the taxpayers get to vote on it that way. The one thing that was said is the transportation lease was one-time thing, it's not a one-time thing. It is a yearly thing, every year, that amount of money for that lease is in our budget. Which we, is the way we, we voted to go, but it's broken down for each year, so just, I'm only commenting on it because he said a one-time.
No, no, I think it was un, unanticipated this year, because we began this year. I don't think it was something we were hoping to have.
Right, so it will be in there this year. Just, just.
Hey, um, I'd like to, uh, uh, as you would say, query you. Um, I'd like you to get on your soapbox and educate everybody here on Act One Seventy-Three for a couple of seconds, even though it's a late meeting. Because I.
One Seventy-Three turned completely around with, I believe it's Act One Twenty-Seven. For one, uh, one Seventy-Three was trying to establish was the concept that. It's more expensive to educate, um, special needs kids than this regular ed kids. And therefore, when you were calculating, I believe it was your full-time equivalents. Um, in sixth grade, no special needs, one point oh FTE. But your sped kid, um, when we were running the numbers about three years ago. The, the, uh, full-time equivalent really was around three point oh. In other words, it costs three times as much as you hate the special needs kid. Now, there was a walk away from that formula with, um, Act One Twenty-Seven. I do not have a clear picture of how badly we would have been damaged, but there was no movement at all. Represented in One Twenty-Seven, but we certainly didn't come out as well as we would have. If we had, um, changed the fundamental ways kids are counted. Um, in terms of the state's effort to support their education. Andy's right, we lost. So I'm sure that we wouldn't have lost bigger, but we didn't get, you know, what I think is essentially parity. With districts who had smaller needs, I would make the argument, we still essentially are subsidized at the stoves. Of this state, not the other way around.
So, um, I, I want to make sure that, so I, I remember, I think what you just said was, Act One Seventy-Three, we, we got more funding. From the, the government for staff, right?
Act One Seventy-Three, as it was passed by the legislature, would have created block grants. The school districts based on total enrollment. However, those enrollments were not adjusted accurately for the cost of, um. Special education, poverty, um, ESL, this is second language. So that the equivalent, uh, students, Andy knows, I haven't got it. Um, we're not completely accurate with the cost of education. That a district like this, where we probably run around twenty-eight, thirty percent sped population compared to, say, Stowe, which. You know, might be five or eight percent. Um, they, they end up surplus, they can roll over into the five or fours, you know?
Thank you. Um, okay, there's nothing else, and I'd like to move on, Mike?
Uh, I just wanna say that it's okay to distribute this.
Yeah.
This is work for, uh, our next budget committee, uh, so if you would. Everybody, uh, likes to get this stuff in advance to take a look at it, so it's. Different, but you're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Um, so, did everybody get one? So I'm not gonna talk about it, despite it wasn't only a agenda, but just, uh, data, data to look at for next.
So this is, uh, Monday, right? Eleven twenty, me and this is Ross will look at, if I'm prepared, take a look at it, people with invitations that are gonna come. They're gonna know what's going on.
Yeah.
Alright. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for your hard work. Thank you, everybody for your hard work again. Alright, next up, there is no unfinished business. Very good comments, um. Uh, David, let's start with you, please.
Okay. I'm, I want to acknowledge the fact that I was a little bit lukewarm around some of norms and goals. Uh, just, uh, Devin, Jason, or however, I supported it. Uh, with the yes, no, because, at the end of the day, plus my board colleagues. I feel it's important to respect their work product. Good job. Next time you do, you can do a better job, so I'm happy with it. That's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Yourself?
That's fine, I acknowledge that our athletic, um, teams did really, really well. A disappointing loss on Saturday for our high school ones, but, um. Knowing how hard they tried and just how much effort they put into it. Um, they should still be appreciated for everything that they, that they've done as well. Um, also, just please, keep in mind all of those people in other parts of the world. That are struggling so much with wartime situations right now, and just, there's good people on both sides there. We really need to keep at our hearts and prayers and just people that. Um, there's a budget committee thing coming up in Congress, we're near. Post one that's not supporting Israel or, um, Ukraine, so, um. It's kind of like, appreciate the time, to be looking out for those people. Just leave the kindness in our schools and then care for our people, including everybody that is too.
Hey, so, Darcy?
Um, just wanna thank everyone for their time on board, for being here. That.
Thanks, Darcy. June?
I'm all set, thank you.
Yep.
Next at the meet, um, for our regular meeting, it will be after Thanksgiving and, and clearly, well, there are a lot of things for us.
Point?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to mention that last week, we had a bizarre event in Saxon River where a gentleman is allegedly. Shot by his family members over beating him. And I think you can hear that, and you can think, like, something wrong with the individual. I think the underlying issue is that there are a lot of people out there that are suffering. At, I happen to be in the minister's office, so I'm hearing a lot of those people that are struggling as a result of the cost of living. Uh, and the pressure, the financial pressures that they're under, as a result of this inflation that we've been going through. Um, so the bottom line is, as we go through the budget process, I think that we have to be aware. That there are a lot of people, having to be forty-nine families this year, that had trouble paying their taxes. The chance that we're gonna lose their homes in the town of Rocketville. Uh, and, uh, yeah, it's hopefully it's a one-off situation, but it is something to have against the pressure that people are feeling out there. I don't think we get a feel of that, so I just want to comment.
Okay.
I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Kelly, the teachers, the students, the parents, everyone that's had to work through PCBs, and now we have. Probably as complete of a school building as we have had for a long time, so I'm excited for the. People in drama, people in athletics, that are getting back into their space, so that they can, uh, educate the kids with the best of their ability. So, um, I'm excited that we have norms and goals in line, so thank you for, uh, board members for that.
Thanks, Rob. Um, so I do want to, uh, uh, thank Jamie, Rob, and June for the work that they did on my goals, and. And, Jamie, I know it's a little, uh, tough on all you guys, but I just really want to just make sure we do it right, and that's, that's kind of the goal. Right? The goal is to do it right, and I think that we are gonna do it right, so, and, and I have compliments on, like, each one of you guys so much. And, and I want to go back to the very beginning of PCBs. Um, and I don't, I don't want to take anything away from Kelly or Andy or anybody who works in this building. You know, let's not forget Jeff Potter and his team. Um, but I, I said from the very beginning that this board is not gonna run from the challenge. And, uh, we didn't, and so I want to commend each one of you folks for the work that we put in. Every meeting that we've showed up to. Hard, we're hardly ever on Zoom, we're usually all in attendance, whether it's buildings and grounds, whether it's budget, we care, we show up. We're doing the work, you know, we're working a lot of hours, each one of us. Um, so, you know, and then when it comes to a challenge, when, you know, one of my kids, they, they know what I'm gonna say when the challenge comes up. My response is gonna be good. Bring on the challenge, good. You know, that's what we want, we want the challenge, you know, that is my response, okay, we've got a challenge, good, let's go ahead, let's face it head on. And we did that, and it shows a lot of caring and a lot of, uh, you know, um. Backing of the administration, where, you know, again, we're always not put in the bright light with, uh, staff and administration. Gotta say, I think we did it right, and, uh, you know, I commend all of you guys, we found this challenge, um. You know, I, I also stated, you know, and, uh, for the senators, that we're gonna bet on ourselves. And that we're gonna, you know, bet that we can do this right, and, um. And again, we gave administration a hard launch to do, give an open checkbook, to do whatever is needed to get this right. So anyone who's in government in the state, you know. I, I think it. You know, we really need to pat ourselves on the back, and the administration, and how we did, and the government can learn something from what we did in this small town. So, congratulations to all you guys, and, uh, I wish you all a good night, and, um, our next meeting is. November twenty-seventh at six thirty PM, right here, so, call it major, and that. Eight fifty-two.